All right, just about seven o'clock here in the Aberdeen City Council chambers. Today is November 13, 2007, and we are here for the regularly scheduled city council meeting of the city of Aberdeen. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll for attendance?
Councilman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lambach?
Here.
Councilman Gooden?
Here.
Councilman Lindicamp?
Here.
Mayor McGrady?
Here. We have five council members present and accounted for. We also have with us Pastor Don Dove from Living Hope Presbyterian Church to say a prayer, and then Councilman Gooden is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So Pastor Dove, come on up. Please rise. Welcome, sir.
Let's pray. Father, we pause in the midst of a world that we know is very violent, there's a lot of corruption, and great difficulty and suffering. And we pause tonight just to give you thanks for the many things that we forget to give you thanks for: for the life that we live, for our families, for friendship, for the communities you place us in. I pray, Lord, that you would bless this council and this city. I pray that you would give those who lead this city wisdom, integrity, compassion. Lord, we ask that you would bless the families here. And we pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice
Counsel, we have three sets of minutes prepared by the clerk. That is for September 25, 2017, October 23's council work session, and October 23's council meeting that the clerk has dutifully prepared for your review and approval if there's a motion to do so. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of September 25th, October 23rd for the work session, and October 23rd for the council meeting, all of 2017. Thank you, Councilman Gooden. Is there a second?
A second.
A second from Councilman Taylor? You spoke very softly, yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Any more discussion on those minutes? Any amendments? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, please call the roll for approval of the three minutes.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lambach?
Aye.
Councilman Gooden?
Aye.
Councilman Lindicamp?
Aye.
Mayor McGrady?
Aye. Five votes, the affirmative. Those three minutes are approved. Counsel, we have two statements of closed meeting to read into the record specifically regarding Monday, April, excuse me, April. I'm looking at October, and I said April, but October 23rd, and then on Monday, the November 6th of 2017. On Monday, October 23rd, 2017, the mayor and council held a special, regularly scheduled council meeting in the council chambers at 7:00 PM. All members voted by roll call in the affirmative to close the meeting. At approximately 8:30 PM, a closed meeting was convened by the mayor and council in the second floor administrative conference room. Members present were Mayor Patrick McGrady, Councilman Stephen Gooden, Councilwoman Sandra Lambach, Councilman Timothy Lindicamp, and Councilman Melvin Taylor. Also in attendance were Randy Robertson by phone, Oprah Bojack, Director of Finance, Phyllis Grover, Director of Planning and Community Development, Kyle Torster, Director of Public Works, and Monica Correll, the city clerk. There was one guest in attendance. The meeting was held pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, statutory authority Maryland Code annotated, general provisions, Article Section 3, 305b, number four, to consider a matter that concerns the proposal for a business or industrial organization to locate, expand, or remain in the state, and number 14, before a contract is awarded or bids are opened, to discuss a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy or the contents of a bid or proposal, if public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process. The topic was contractual matters and discussions. During this meeting, the mayor and council met with staff and the guests to discuss several contractual matters. There was no action taken, and the meeting was adjourned at approximately 9:45 PM. Counsel, for your information and for the public's benefit, whenever we hold a meeting in compliance with the Open Meetings Act of the state of Maryland, a statement of closed meeting is prepared by the clerk and submitted to the record. There's a handful of administrative reasons why a city government like ours can hold a meeting that is closed to the public, and we comply with that by making a motion that complies with one of the 14 reasons for that. And then the statement of closed meeting is presented at the next reasonable opportunity. So, for the second item, the statement of closed meeting for Monday, November 6, 2017, the mayor and council held a special council meeting at 5:30 PM in the second floor administrative conference room of City Hall. All members voted by roll call in the affirmative to close the meeting. At approximately 6:31, a closed meeting was convened by the mayor and council in the same room. Members present were Mayor Patrick McGrady, Councilman Stephen Gooden, Councilwoman Sandra Lambach, Councilman Timothy Lindicamp, and Councilman Melvin Taylor. Also in attendance were Randy Robertson, city manager, and Monica Correll, city clerk. The meeting was held pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, statutory authority Maryland Code annotated, general provisions, Article Section 3, 305b, number four, to consider a matter that concerns the proposal for a business or industrial organization to locate, expand, or remain in the state. The topic was contract negotiations. During this meeting, the mayor and council discussed contractual negotiations. Action taken by the council was confidential. The meeting was adjourned at approximately 7:14 PM. Thank you for indulging me, counsel. Next, we are fortunate to have with us this evening Ms. Ashira Kabili from the Hartford County Education Foundation. No, forgive me.
You're welcome.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Thank you, welcome. That wasn't the name the last time I saw you.
It wasn't. That's the first sentence of my speech, I promise.
Yes, ma'am.
So, good evening, councilmen and community members, and councilwomen, of course. My name again is Ashira Kabili. I'm the Development Director for the Hartford County Education Foundation, formerly known as the Greater Excellence in Education Foundation. We used to be called GEEF, so now we're the Hartford County Education Foundation. Also with me tonight is our president and founder, Deb Murlock, in the back, and also our board chair, Warren Hamilton. We're here tonight by invitation of Mayor McGrady to update you on the work of our foundation, with special attention to what we're doing in the Aberdeen area, and demonstrate what we could do with additional funding from the city of Aberdeen. So, in the packets before you, I think you both have digital versions and hard copies. You'll first see just a general fact sheet about our programs. It briefly details what it is we do and our accomplishments. And on that second page is also a complete roster of our Board of Directors, just for your information. So, just a little background. While we started our foundation in the Edgewood area nearly 14 years ago, we expanded about six years ago to the rest of Hartford County. Now we act as the official foundation for Hartford County Public Schools. Nowadays, our organization is most widely known for our Tools for Schools program, especially our Resource Center. So, in addition to delivering supplies directly to the schools and running the largest school supply drive in the county, the Resource Center also serves as a hub for public school educators to shop for free school supplies throughout the year, both for their classrooms and in need students. Now, our organization's purpose is to supply the youth and educators at Hartford County Public Schools with resources that level the playing field for students and make classroom learning exceptional through expanded and innovative learning opportunities. If you turn your attention to the impact report included in your packets, that is this page right here, you will see that within just the last six months alone, we are pleased to report that our foundation is responsible for augmenting Aberdeen with nearly $25,000 worth of educational resources. That's $25,000 in just the last six months. The majority of the aid came in the form of school supplies being funneled into our Aberdeen classrooms, while the other support included books from our early intervention literacy program called Books in Hand, and classroom grants, which supply teachers with the fiscal resources that they need to extend innovative learning in their classrooms. So, we come to the city council tonight to ask for consideration for your support. As we strive in partnership with you to transform the young people of Aberdeen into college graduates and workforce-ready adults, we come to you tonight with two initiatives to To start off, let me just pose kind of a rhetorical question here. But just how important is reading to our children? How essential are early literacy skills? Research demonstrates that a child who cannot read at a third grade level by third grade is four times less likely to graduate from high school. When you add poverty into that mix, which we know is an issue here in Aberdeen, that child becomes 13 times less likely to graduate from high school. We also know from our research that books in the home is the single greatest indicator of future success for a child, a better indicator than your household income or what your parents do for a living. The first initiative I'm bringing to you today, we're here to propose, is an extension of our Books in Hand program, which builds at-home libraries for elementary students at our Title I elementary schools. The goal with this extension is to continue to build at-home libraries for the youngest members of our community. Dr. Seuss's birthday is a great excuse to bring up the importance of reading, and an even better time to gift a book to a child. That's this page right here, that's in red. Together, I propose, we propose, that we could equip 1,400 elementary school students at G. Lisby, Halls Cross Road, and Bakerfield with leveled reading books of their very own to take home on Read Across America Day. Each book would include a book plate recognizing the city of Aberdeen for their gift to each child. The cost is just $5 per student. While the Read Across America program is a great way to encourage literacy, when library access simply isn't enough, there are also other needs that exist in our Aberdeen elementary schools: basic supplies for kids at home. Just this school year, we supplied Halls Cross Road Elementary School with 500 homework kits, so that students could complete their homework and projects outside the classroom. This was not something we suggested to them. Rather, the school approached us, telling us, "Hey, our kids need this. They don't have the supplies they need. Having it in the classrooms just isn't enough. It's only with your help that we could look to supply all 1,400 elementary students with homework toolkits," making preparedness a given for all Aberdeen students. Each toolkit would certainly acknowledge the city of Aberdeen, as would the books. The cost is just $10 per student. Of course, either of these programs could be done at smaller levels, by grades, or even by classrooms. We also look, but we look for game changers, and believe that both of these programs are changing the game for kids, giving them the resources they need to be successful in reading and in their overall studies. It is our impact that drives us to do our job, and we could guess it's the impact you make that drives you. Tonight, we presented both our Read Across America program and our Homework Toolkits program. Please consider joining us in one or the other or both in changing the game for our young people in Aberdeen. If acceptable to the council, we are interested in submitting a proposal for review in the next budget cycle that examines how Aberdeen can invest in our community's education through these initiatives, with special focus towards extending learning for all Aberdeen elementary students. The final page in your packet is simply a corporate giving program that we started this past January. Any grant in the amount higher than $3,000 would qualify for inclusion in this program, unless, of course, the council chooses to opt out of its benefits. I would be happy to take any questions, and if I can't answer them, I'm sure our president and founder, Deb Murlock, would be happy to address your questions as well.
Ms. Kabili, if people want to know more about the Hartford County Education Foundation on the Internet, how could they find out more information?
They can simply go to harfordeducation.org.
Great. Very good. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Kabili? Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much.
All right, counsel, we have a budget amendment on which there is a hearing scheduled for this evening. Specifically, that is ordinance number 17016. This ordinance was introduced on October 25th. Mr. Jack, I'm going to open this public hearing, and so, Mr. Jack, do you want to speak to what this covers again?
Sure. We're asking to increase the general fund budget by $254,000 to cover, $18,000 is carried over from last fiscal year to cover the roof repair for the senior center. We're asking for $106,000 for additional contribution for the police pension plan. We're asking for $50,000 for Festival Park playground expansion. Actually, that is funded by the state. And we're asking for $80,000 to be transferred to the stadium fund for inspection and review of the stadium facility. In the capital projects fund, we're asking to increase it by $227,000 for block grant projects, $177,000, again, this is funded by the county, and $50,000 for the senior center roof replacement project that was carried over from last year.
Thank you, Mr. Jack. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Jack before we open this up for public comment during the public hearing process? Hearing, no questions. Anybody who wants to speak specifically to ordinance number 17016 may approach the microphone here, state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Georgia Scheidey. I live at 304 Farm Road in Aberdeen. We just moved into the community in June, and I just found out about this meeting and this proposal by happen chance. I was looking for trash removal dates on the website, and so I called, and they told me the meeting was today. I was also informed by the gentleman that called me back that there was no voting going on tonight, and that sounds like you just said they were calling for a vote tonight. Is that correct?
I don't think so, no, ma'am. That's not what I said.
Okay. I misunderstood. The voting is...
Well, I think what I said was that this was introduced on October 25th. We're speaking specifically about ordinance 17016?
Yes, the budget.
Yeah, I think we could act on it tonight. Usually, it's our process to hold the public hearing and then defer it to the next council meeting, but it could be acted on as soon as the meeting is held.
Okay. And when this information of all these transfers, all these appropriations, they're from current budget monies?
Yes, ma'am.
So, there's no increase of any taxes? Will we need to further use these in the next...
It's a very good question, and that is the case. I would be very happy to go through them. This is probably not the venue for going through it line by line, but I'd be very happy to go through it with you in advance of the next meeting where we vote on it.
So, okay, good. That way, I won't have to worry about it. We'll vote next, will that be next month?
November 27th, I believe, is our next council meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So, Ms. Scheidey?
Yes.
You can call me, or we can meet up. I don't expect you to stick around for the whole meeting, but if you want to call me, I can, happy to meet you and walk through these. It is confusing, and I appreciate that. And yes, I'd be happy to explain it to you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on 17016? Okay, I don't see anybody getting up, so I'm going to call the public hearing to close on 17016, and we will move right along to the next item on our agenda, which is the time for the public to address the city council for public comment. So, anybody who wants to address the city council about any topic whatsoever may approach the microphone. When you do, I encourage you, please, state your name and your address for the record.
Steve Johnson, 119 West Beller Avenue. First of all, I want to speak as president of the Aberdeen Chamber of Commerce. I've expressed the interest of several of our businesses and concern over getting the news that you folks wanted to sell the stadium, and I've relayed that to you, and I think you have reached out to a few of those hoteliers, I do believe, and that you've set a meeting for tomorrow to talk to some of those folks. So, if you have done that, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Second, I want to speak to you as a business owner and owner of many properties in Aberdeen. I want to voice my concern about the stadium. First of all, the venue of events that has now been shut down for the moment, and I would like to say that business is not a switch that you can just turn on and off. We have lost that business and our economic impact probably for the better part of a year, even if we could find somebody to step right in and pick up that business that takes scheduling in advance, setting those events up, and that was close to $100,000 loss for our city for probably this next year. Second is my concern about a meeting I attended last Monday, where I found that a lot of the preliminary work and answers were not, questions were not answered or work done before, we found out if we could even legally sell the stadium. And I voiced my concern then as well, that I thought that meeting should have been held first, because I've heard since the stadium has been put out for sale, or the word has been put out that it's for sale, that you've had several interested parties. Well, since that word has been put out, so have Ripken's have several interested parties. We have some folks that have told them that they would build them a facility if they would come to their city or their county, because they would love to have the worldwide branding of the Ripken name and the economic impact that it brings to our county, which I told you I would bring you a copy of the study that was done in 2016 that states just by baseball/softball is a $43 million a year economic impact to our county, and Aberdeen is a big receiver of a lot of that money: our hotels, our restaurants, our retail. So, if I may...
Please, give it to the clerk, and she'll send him down. Thank you.
And the city manager as well.
And being in business myself, I know that business is all about relationships. So, a question I would ask is, what does this do with our long-term relationship with our tenant at the stadium now? Since he does have the iron birds that play there, which also create economic impact for our city, and they also do the Ripken experience. I am very concerned about all of that, what the word of the stadium and other people offering to build them a facility to come somewhere else does with our long-term relationship. I just am very worried that we're going down a slippery slope, and this is a pivotal point for the future of our city. And I would caution, on behalf of the citizens, on behalf of the business owners, and on behalf of businesses that would like to come here, to just be cautious. I have asked questions and have not been able to get answers. I know all of you, so I've talked to all of you, and I haven't been able to get answers on, you know, how this is going to affect our bond rating. We have a 20-plus million dollar asset. If that goes away, are we putting 20-plus million dollars in our general fund? Does that affect our bond rating? And if it does, that in turn will affect the interest on our loans. Will that affect our taxes? I haven't been able to get answers for questions like those. And I've asked, what would the property tax be on the stadium? I've gotten answers of some misinformation, some non-information, and it's just concerning as a business owner, a property owner. It's just concerning. But yet, we put out the word that we are looking to sell the stadium. I just don't think we've done enough preliminary work on how it will affect our community in the long term. I don't think any of you can really tell me that you've sat down and talked to the Ripkens and tell me how it will affect our long-term relationship, our business relationship with those folks. So, that concerns me. And again, I wanted to express the way I feel about, as a business owner and property owner, and as wanting the cities to move forward and prosper, I am very concerned. Thank you all.
I'm Bernard Blackus, North Gate Road, Aberdeen, Maryland. Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager, and Directors. After looking at these 14 or so initiatives tonight in the budget, I'd like to talk about something extremely boring, extremely private. It's trash collection. We've been doing it since, I think, about 1892, and it's an imperative. It's not a luxury. This is something that has to be done in every city in the country. My concern is that when I look at relatively, relative municipal taxation in the county, we're higher than others, and I'd like to think we're better than others. But having said that, I think the citizenry of Aberdeen have a right periodically to ask for a little of the fundamentals. And so, my situation is, I've only been here 75 years, so I'm a new kid on the block. We had one police officer when I was a little kid, and we didn't have the luxuries of everything that we do today then. But having said that, trash collection has evolved from two collections a week to one, which is fine. It has evolved from completely a free service to a stickered service. That was established by a lady by the name of Rambo, who established the ticket, 50-cent tickets and dollar tickets. This year, we experienced an increase, which was double, and that's all well and good, but that kind of brings me back to the tax base here on the one hand, and it kind of brings me back to fees on the other: taxes, fees. Folks, as far as I'm concerned, when you take your dollars that you write your check for your taxes, you better make another list for fees and put it under it, because that's really the cost of living in Aberdeen, Maryland. Now, I believe that anything like trash collection, that's been around as long as it has, I think it deserves a little respect, and that respect is that it enhances health in our city. If you don't believe it, when I was a little kid, the trash collectors in New York decided to go on a strike for probably more benefits, et cetera, and the city wasn't very pretty. And neither would our city be if we had a trash situation. I'm satisfied completely, and that's hard to do, with the service of our trash-collecting people. They're jovial, they're friendly, they talk to you, they don't run your cans over, they're great. But if there's more expense for trash collection in this town, I don't think it should fall behind many of these 14 initiatives. I just don't. I think that our city should stay with the basics. Some wise man talked about the letters kiss, and I won't belabor you with what it means. We got to keep it simple. And I really believe that, I've read some of the initiatives, right expenses. I'm awfully glad that we've got a whole lot of apartment houses coming in to share these taxes with me. I could kiss them on both cheeks. But anyway, thank you to listening to an old man ramble about an old-fashioned idea. And in closing, I want to thank you, Mayor, for giving my way... for giving my wife a vendor to take our swimming pool. Thanks to you, it's gone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I did want to say that on the prioritization of all this stuff, I found it very similar to Maslow's Theory.
[laughing]
You know, the city needs a Maslow's Theory too.
We've reached self-actualization, huh?
Self-actualization. Well, right now, we're down to the physiological need.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Backus.
Bob Hartman, 226 Paradise. On Mr. Backus, same thought with the trash. I was sitting at home and when we're paying for the trash and everything else and your proposal and everything else, I said, I don't put out 6,000 pounds of trash a year. And what you proposed, and later on here when you come in, the amount was supposed to be like $216 a year. You know, I'm thinking on the heaviest day, I put out 50 pounds a week. So that comes up to 2,600 pounds. You know, that's not $216 worth. My household's not putting out 6,000 pounds of trash a year. You know, so I think that's absurd. You know, we got 100% increase last year because when we went from the 50 cents to the dollar. Now we're going to go to this ridiculous amount. I live on a state road, okay? And so do you, Mr. Gray. And we don't get all the immunities that everybody else do here in the city of Aberdeen. You don't sweep my streets, you don't fix my sidewalks, you know? Only thing I get is water and sewer, and I'm paying for that. So am I going to get a reduction in property tax because I don't get all the services? You know, it's only fair. You know, if I don't get all the services, why am I paying for them? You know, and there's other people who live in Aberdeen on state roads. We don't get that luxury, you know? But we sit there and we're paying, you know? And it's not fair to me, because you don't pick up the leaves in front of my house if there's leaves. You know, so I don't see where I'm getting all the benefits to pay the taxes, and now you're going to do another increase. Now, I want to know on the increases too. Let's say I have a duplex that I'm renting, okay? Well, the water bill comes to me, but yet I got there. Am I going to have to pay $432 because now there's two people living at that duplex?
Don't leave, Mr. Hartman. Mr. Torster is going to give us a thorough rundown of the details.
I know, but I mean, I just want to bring, you know, this is some of the stuff that's-
I appreciate it, yes, sir.
You know, it's biting at me, you know? I said, wait a minute, you know, this is not, I don't know. I'm just tired of paying taxes and not getting anything.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you know, yeah, I know we have a police department. We've got public works and everything else. We contract out the grass out here at the park. You contracted that out. Wait a minute, why did we buy equipment to cut grass and everything else? And then we're contracting it out? If that's the case, let's sell that and cut back on manpower. So, okay, now, okay, we're getting back to reality. If you want to farm the stuff out, then dag on it. The budget needs to be reduced accordingly. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else can give a public comment?
Good evening. My name is Chuck Jacobs, 15 South Park Street, Aberdeen, Maryland. I also am the president of Hartford Bank, 8 West Bel Air Avenue. I'm here to speak on Ripken Initiative. I travel a lot around the state. And I can't tell you how many times people said, what's going on in Aberdeen? What's going on with the Ripken Initiative? Where are you at? I don't have a lot to tell them about where we're at. All I know is Ripken Initiative is something to be very proud of. It's taken us a long time to get here. It's a great event. It's a great time. It's family-oriented. So we have taken a hit on our image, in my opinion, if we don't settle this thing. Next, you're losing control of the stadium by this initiative. And what that means is, all your leverage is gone once you sell it. I can also tell you, if the city doesn't own it and the Ripkens are not involved, Hartford Bank will not be part of the plan. So take it or leave it. Just telling you, we're in it for the community. We're in it for the Ripken Initiative. And if it's not there anymore, we're probably not going to be as active a candidate and a partner with Ripken. No one, no baseball team, minor league team owns their stadiums. Two out of 450 of them, I think is the number I heard. So if we're going to move forward in this, make sure the deal. I was involved in the first one. We got a bad deal. We were screaming, we, the public, we, the people who were trying to put it together. It was a bad deal. Now we're living with it. Got it. We're stuck with it till '22. We'll see if it continues after that. But the bottom line is, get professional help. Get the right broker. Get the right lawyer, not local. No one local knows about stadiums. Get somebody, pay them what they're worth, and get some help with the contractual negotiations. This is a theme I've been talking to a lot of folks about. Get some help. We are not experts. If it was me doing it, I would get some help. So with that said, I think owning it gives you a lot more advantages. Also, the economic impact. I believe there will be hotel vacancies as a direct result of this at some point if Ripken pulls out. Hotel vacancies mean we might have empty hotels, or we might have downgraded hotels. So I don't see any economic impact, other than what Steve just presented, as being evaluated even now. So bottom line is, it affects gas stations, it affects restaurants, it affects hotels, it affects fans. So this is a big deal. Let's do it right. If it has to happen, so be it. But get some professional help. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the canine in the car solar?
Sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Anybody else for a time, public comment? There is another opportunity at the end of the meeting, so you will not miss your opportunity if you decide you want to say something later. Going, going. All right, moving on. Counsel, we have some amendments to the development code. I don't know where they are in my packet exactly. Okay, they're in the computer? Nope? Okay, they're listed as proposed amendments to ordinance 17-0-01. Is there a motion to introduce this portfolio of 24 amendments?
Yeah, they are.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you use that?
Yes, ma'am, I got it here. Thank you. Councilwoman Lambek, was that a motion to introduce the packet of amendments?
[laughing] Okay, I vote to introduce this packet of amendments.
Totally, 24. 24 amendments?
Yes. To 17-0-61.
01.
01.
Yes, ma'am. Is there a second to that motion?
There we go.
A second amendment.
We're going to flip a coin?
Go ahead, you can have it.
Okay, Taylor, a second by Councilman Taylor. Is there any more discussion on these amendments? So in work session, we talked about some of these amendments. The way that the council is going to proceed on this is to introduce this packet of 24 amendments as prepared by the city attorney and Ms. Grover on behalf of the council. And then at our next council meeting, we're going to address any of them that are controversial whatsoever at any request of the council to bring them up for an individual roll call vote and address each one of them on the October 27th. Hopefully, we'll be done with this at that time and be able to adopt a package of proposed amendments. Ms. Grover is mouthing to me, I said the wrong date. November 27th. November 27th, not October 27th, but good. Any more discussion on these amendments before we vote to introduce the? Wait, no, so that would adopt them. So I'm going to deem these introduced, okay? You want to vote? Okay. The clerk wants a vote to introduce the packet of amendments. So if we do that, that's not adopting the amendments, right, Madam Clerk?
No, you're just introducing them.
Okay, introducing the packet of amendments. We got a first and a second. Any more discussion, counsel?
No.
Please call the roll on introducing the 24 amendments.
I just want to make sure that some of the amendments that we do not agree with, that will be able to pull out next week-
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. As discussed in the work session, that is the protocol.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lambek?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lambek? Councilman Gooden?
Aye.
Councilman Lindicamp?
Aye.
Mayor McGrady?
Aye, five votes in the affirmative. Those amendments are introduced, and we'll shelf that legislation until the 27th. And the clerk made me aware during our work session that we're bouncing on the 60-day window. And so if we don't enact that by our first, our December meeting, we need to defer that legis- oh, wow, no, by November 27th. We'll need to vote to defer that. So let's get it done next meeting. Okay, good. Rocking and rolling. Next, we have the 17-0-15 regarding the height of vegetation ordinance. Is there any more discussion to add to this legislation before we vote on final passage of 17-0-15? Again, counsel, for your information, this streamlines the process of going after properties within municipal limits that are multiple repeat violators of the vegetation ordinances. We have a bunch of houses that have been foreclosed upon or in the process of foreclosure or otherwise abandoned. The owners have passed, and there's not clear who's responsible for it, where the process for getting the grass cut extends months between cuts because of the required notice via certified mail and 14 days period of waiting, and 14 days period of waiting after notification. And then the ultimate result is the grass gets to be three feet tall three times per summer. What this will allow to do for a habitual offender defined here as two violations in a calendar year, the process of notification before the city takes steps to hire a contractor to cut the grass is reduced significantly to two calendar days for notification rather than 14 days. Anyway, any more discussion on this before we vote on adopting 17-0-15? Is there a motion to adopt 17-0-15?
I'll make a motion to adopt 17-0-15.
Thank you, Councilman Gooden. Is there a second?
Second, ma'am.
A second from Councilman Taylor. Any more discussion at all? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lambek?
Aye.
Councilman Gooden?
Aye.
Councilman Lindicamp?
Aye.
Mayor McGrady?
Aye, five votes in the affirmative. After a period of 50 days, that will become law. And the police department will have another tool in the toolbox of code enforcement.
21 days, sir.
21 days? What's 50 days?
That's for an annexation.
Oh.
Charter amendment resolution.
Charter amendment. It's only 21 days. Sooner rather than later. Good deal. Thank you. Good deal. Next item on the agenda is updates from the city manager. But before I turn over the microphone to the city manager, you will find guests here a copy on your chair of the Aberdeen Advocate, the city's newsletter produced and distributed free of charge to everyone on the city's email list via email@aberdeenmd.gov. You can go and sign up today. It's encouraged of everybody who has any interest in the city of Aberdeen to participate in this email distribution list. It offers information about goings-on, generally really fruitful information about community activities and all kinds of other great stuff that the city staff runs across in their travels. Anyway, aberdeenmd.gov. Sign up today at no cost to you. Mr. Robertson?
Mayor, with your concurrence, I'd ask that I'll follow Mr. Jack because I have some words about the audit. I'd like him to-
Yes, sir.
Do a prelude.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council and citizens. Before I present the summary of the audited financial statements, I would like to thank the staff of the finance department for their efforts throughout the year and during the audit. And I would also like to thank the other departments for their input to facilitate the audit. Thank you, guys. The financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2017, were audited by the independent accounting firm, RSM US LLP. The city received an unqualified opinion on the financial statements. Overall, the financial position of the city improved over the prior fiscal year. The general fund had a budgetary surplus of $1.6 million. Most of the surplus came from property and income tax revenues and APG management fees and savings in expenses. The water fund posted a profit of $645,000. The civil fund posted a loss of $27,000 before transfers in, but posted a profit of $220,000, with transfers in of $247,000 from the general fund. The stadium fund posted a profit of $349,000 before transfers in, but the profit increased to $1.3 million, with transfers in of $975,000 from the general fund. The profit in the stadium fund was due to a $494,000 grant from the state and the amortization of the $1 million rail replacement cost over 15 years. The city's long-term liabilities increased by $855,000 to the $6.2 million due to the new civil loan and pension liability. The city's net position increased by $4.6 million to $80.2 million. Net position is the difference between total assets and total liabilities. The increase is primarily from tax revenues, capital connection fees, management fees, and savings in expenses. The fund balance for the city's governmental funds, the government funds are the general capital projects and special funds. The fund balance for them was $13.6 million. Fund balance is difference between assets and liabilities of a governmental fund. About $12.4 million of the $13.6 million is unassigned and can be used to support the general government's operating needs. In the governmental funds, revenues increased by $745,000 compared to prior year. Expenses increased by $1.1 million. Personal property tax was a primary factor for the revenue increase. While expenses associated with the closure of the block grant loan program and public safety were the main factors in the increase in expenses. In the enterprise funds, charges for services increased by $1.6 million from the prior year, predominantly due to increase in capital connection fees. Expenses increased by $252,000 due to increases in cost of services provided to customers. The next couple of pages, the next page shows the schedule of revenues and expenditures. I'm not going to go through them line by line. I'll just take the total. The top part of the page shows the general fund's schedule of revenues and expenditures. Total revenues was $17 million. And total expenditures was $15.5 million, creating a surplus of $1.6 million. The second half of the page shows the enterprise funds' revenues and expenses. For the water fund, total revenues was $3.9 million, with total expenses of $3.3 million, creating an income before transfers in of $645,000. In the civil fund, total revenues was $4.12 million. Expenses was $4.14 million, creating a loss before transfers in of $26,000. In the stadium fund, total revenues was $846,000. Total expenses was $497,000, creating an income before transfers in of $349,000. When transfers in are included, the water fund, of course, remained the same. There was no transfer in, $645,000 net income. The civil fund, net income, $220,000, and the stadium fund, $1.3 million. The last page shows just a graphical representation of the resources and how those resources were allocated.
Thank you, Mr. Jack. Thank you, Mr. Jack. Any questions for Mr. Jack? So to clarify, Mr. Jack, when financial statements are audited by an independent auditor, the result that you're looking for optimally is an unqualified result, right? Unqualified audit means they didn't find anything out of place or out of order and everything was as we told them it was?
Yes, and the financial statement material is correct, you know.
Right. Good work. Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Mr. Robertson?
Did you have anything else, Mr. Jack?
I'm done, sir.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, just a couple of comments after the first year on the, my first year, as it relates to the audit. I think you have an extraordinary group of people down in your finance office. I think you all well-recognize that under Mr. Jack's leadership. I would also very specifically like to commend all the department heads because you knew this year from insurance, the way we buy cars, we've been consistently trying to look for economies of force, savings, et cetera. To have as many years as an unqualified report that Mr. Jack has is truly extraordinary, having been in a lot of cities. But this year, I specifically commend that, I guess, fifth paragraph now where our net assets have grown dramatically. Yes, some of it's taxes, most of it's probably free to lay, if I recall, Mr. Jack. But a lot of that is internal savings that they have been consistently trying to produce. So on the basis of that, I'd like to leave with my city manager meeting tonight to formally commend to you, city council, and to the public, Mr. Jack, and there's a small token here that I'd like to pass along to him for an extraordinary job because he does it year in and year out. And I know you all would echo that. He was here a long time before I was and we have good financials. And to have a report like this where the auditor is, two things that catch my attention, and I'll end it on this. No recurring findings. No recurring findings. That's extraordinary sometimes in an audit of this size. And no concerns as it relates to, in terms of financial--
Defenses.
No, in terms of internal controls. It tells you our business processes are well exercised and overlooked. And that goes to each department, particularly in the water and sewer and the enterprise fund. So it was a good year. And so I don't want to do that. But, Mr. Jack, I think you did a good job. I think your team thinks you did a good job and thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Thank you, Mr. Jack.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Still in your ballpark here, Mr. Robertson.
Okay.
Excuse me, can I add?
Please.
We'll post the audit report on the internet--
Great.
--the next couple of days.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Correll, could you post that picture? In my last weekly note, I mentioned we, the dog park-- let's go to the second one first. The dog park, which is being really well utilized on the weekends, the frisbee golf course, I haven't seen that much. But we had a new addition about two weeks ago and that's a little library there, a free library. So I'm trying to, we are all trying to get some word out, particularly in the medium that we do capture, that this is hopefully just the first of many. They're very popular in larger cities. Baltimore has them, Washington DC has them. And I want to thank the Habitat for Humanity, Soslo Hannah, for taking this first one on. But it's right there at Victory Park and what a good place to start it with, a high residential area and with a lot more increased traffic. So then back to the other slide. Unbeknownst to you, and you can't really tell from that. You kind of see it.
Shop local.
Yeah, it does. We have two billboards that we got free of charge. There's one out on Al 40 that speaks to drug use and the Shop Local that Clear Channel Advertising has donated to us. They'll rotate them in and out, but they're pretty valuable. And in concert with Hartford County Shop Local, we wanted to focus not everything on drug abuse this year, so we did a Shop Local too. So I want to thank Ms. Grover and specifically Clear Channel because we paid nothing for this. And as you know, if you've ever done any of this, it's expensive. That's on that. I would like to, let's see, mention that the 250 project, I've mentioned it in a workshop last week. We had a question from a citizen who didn't know. 250 project, we call it the APG, the Aberdeen Proving Ground 250 project. We're about ready to start swinging hammers and drilling wells. And collectively, that is a multimillion dollar project. And so when Mr. Jack talks about the management fees from APG, that is one of the, in my mind, one of the bigger things that this city staff does and principally Mr. Torster and gets very little recognition. And have been doing it close to 20 years in providing multimillion dollar water and service support to Aberdeen Proving Grounds and at the same time brings revenue into this city. So that's the biggest project I think we have ever undertaken in the history of this contract and we're looking forward to the ribbon cutting about 18 months from now. And then finally, I think some of the, at least in my tenure here, some of the best news I passed along to you the other night, and I just know this is because this is a passion you all had. I'm going to read to you a note from Dane Coleman. Dane is the director of the Baltimore Region United States Postal Service. And Dane has said, "In the summer flurry based upon our conversations," he had not gotten back to me, "but he is projecting that the ramp work for the handicap accessible ramp at the Aberdeen Post Office should be started and completed this spring." That is my report. Congratulations on 20 years of slugging it away.
Let's wait till we see the--
We'll wait till we see it.
They didn't say what year.
Yeah, right.
But a little bit, little bit of good news every time we turn around, we just keep plugging it away. And I want, and Dane too. Dane moved into that job just like I did and--
So the story on that was it was his fifth day on the job when he started seeing the angry protesters and the rally up at the post office that we had to build the ramp, right? Still available, buildtheramp.com. Buildtheramp.com, sign the petition. And so he got blindsided with these angry people protesting at the Aberdeen Post Office on his fifth day on the job. And he said, "What's going on? What do you want?" And Mr. Schlotman and Mr. Hayab and the other great people who showed up to that rally demonstrated the need in Aberdeen for a ramp with the, with the post office with a ramp. And even though we tried to pay for it ourselves, they wouldn't do it. Anyway, so our fingers will be crossed looking for that permit.
I've got his note. I'm going to use this as collateral.
Yeah, that's what he said. I went to where we see the, you know, the shovel in the ground, huh?
It says, "Construction," I'm quoting, "construction will be completed by end of March barring any weather issues."
The last time was by the end of October, they were going to get historical approval from the state historical preservation and this email indicates they got it.
They got it.
So now going out for bid and building us a ramp. So we'll see. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
That's all I have.
Mr. Torster, what do you got?
Take it everywhere you go, right?
You have an adoring fan, apparently. Did you pay him?
Good evening, Mayor, council, residents of Aberdeen. I'd like to give a overview of Aberdeen's current refuse and recycling program and recommended changes in 2018. Before I get a little bit started over here, this has been a long endeavor to get to this point. We've been looking at this for several years now, a lot of it based on action on numbers coming in within the sticker program, looking at options, talking with our collection personnel who are actually out on the street, seeking input on them, making changes in our processes. So a lot of these things are not done blindly and I've heard from residents from time to time, "Why are we changing?" Well, the short point of the fact of matter is that the city of Aberdeen is the only municipal in the state of Maryland that actually falls under the PAYS you throw program. And it's done its job for the last 24 years. So I'll go ahead and get started on this and we'll talk a little bit about this, these changes. So next slide, please. So a little bit about the history. Some of this, Mayor and council is stuff that you're aware of, but I believe it's important for us to kind of walk our way through how we've gone here. So both you and the residents who do get to see this later on this week have an understanding. In 1992, a fee was levied against disposing of the trash. Those were the numbers at that point timeframe. 63 tons in recycling and 237 tons in trash. Fast forward to 2016, the last December 31st, we were averaging 287 tons a month, 76 tons a month in recycling. And you can see the numbers there. Tipping fee has doubled over the last 24 years. The numbers there paint a story that would be one in which we've been trying to tell our residents that the amount that I throw out, the more money, I'm sorry, the more I throw out, the more I pay. Over the last 24 years, we've been consistently running about 25% recycling rate. We haven't increased, we haven't decreased, so we're running around between 25 and 28%. So we start looking at our compliance. And Mr. Backus, I think you had talked about something earlier. One of those issues about health. If we don't pick up the trash, it becomes a health issue. So while we are trying to enforce the compliance to our residents and making sure that the stickers are on the bags, we do have a small number that are non-compliant. So a status would be, "Well, you could just leave it, let code enforcement take care of it." That's fine if it's in the winter and it's 30 degrees and the trash isn't doing anything. It's a little different when it's 90 degrees in the summer and it sits there three, four days before something happens. On top of that, an operational standpoint is that our trucks average about six gallons per mile. So if I have to go back a route, double through, we're wasting fuel to, for $1 or $1.5. So we've looked at this. So we pick up trash. It's unfortunate, we do have a small percentage that do not comply. We've tried successfully to educate our residents. This past summer, we sampled houses. And these fall in line largely with what we're seeing, even with the change in the sticker price last year. Last year, we collected approximately $210,000 in revenue from the stickers. Our fees were $244,000. So we had a delta of about $30,000. It's better than when we looked at the year before when we had somewhere in the neighborhood about 50 to 60 or 70,000 dollars. So when we did this collection over the two weeks, you'll see here that this was a, this is an unscientific study. We didn't go out there, we didn't target residents. We just took a look at the number of bags that were placed out there, number, and the number of stickers, and we looked at within the zones. Within the city, we split them off, zones one through four. Mondays, zone one, et cetera, Tuesdays, and all the way through Thursdays. You can see kind of the numbers right there. And that translates to a potential revenue loss when you extrapolate against those 400 houses across the city, about $45,000 a year. Again, I didn't do a scientific study, but it does fall in here. Next slide. So we start looking at, what are we doing? What can we make it better for our staff? We talked to our, talked to our trash collectors, the staff who is out there every single day that are slugging it away. They're in there rain or shine. How can we make it better for them? Well, some of these things, we ended up talking about. They told us a story. They pull up to a trash, they pull up to a stop. We have approximately 4,500 stops, 1,100 stops a day. And when you, when you have to do these stops, coupled with the fact that we have to travel down to Days Cove on the border of Hartford County and Baltimore County, right off, off near the White Marsh exit, that's about a 30-minute trip on a, on a trash truck going down Route 40 through all the traffic lights back up. So we looked at that and we were looking at our numbers. So one of the things our staff said is, "It's difficult. Even though we have the stickers, we have the recycling, it's difficult for us to tell what, what is trash and what's recycling." So we looked at that. We run into a situation where our recycling, if it goes into a container and contains trash, we get fined for it. So that's another consideration. Our staff isn't going to go ahead and look through your bags to make sure that you've recycled, is in the recycling container. Again, we have, we have several miles to do every single day. We also run in a situation where people overstuffed their bags or they're out in the weather and when you're lifting them up, they have a tendency, they could tear open. We've had situations where we've had our staff injured from lifting these items. I got seven staff members who have to hit all the stops and sometimes I know going out to the trash bin, I got to carry both things in my hand to get it out to the, to the curb bin. So I imagine sometimes many of our residents have run into that. But they have to lift, they have to lift those items 1,100 times minimum a day. So I could do it once or twice, but think about it, 1,100 times a day. We've also run in a situation where items, because they're in there and they're in plastic containers, when you reach them up, we've had staff members poked or jabbed by items. They've sought medical attention as needed. And also, the fact is, it's raw trash. I won't go into details on that. I think our imagination's good enough on what you throw out. Next staff, next. So where do we go from here? One of the things is that we came into the fiscal year 17 budget, not this past budget, but last year's budget. We replaced a trash truck. It had what's called a totter lifter. Toter lifter, I have a totter in front of me, but a totter lifter is a mechanical arm that attaches to the back of the machine and through a series of hydraulics lifts the container up. So this trash truck came in. We had three other trucks that did, that did not have a totter lifter. So the fiscal year 18 included a budget for retrofitting the three remaining totter lifters and any future trucks will include the totter lifters in there. Let me do a 30-second takeaway on this. One of the things I've heard is from our staff members, "Well, I could lift it better. I could lift it faster than a totter lifter can." Our staff prefer to use that truck with the totter lifter on it. It's faster and it's quicker. We've listened to our staff on that. We also authorized, thankfully, thankful to the Mayor and council for authorizing $400,000. So we are purchasing one green container similar to this and a blue container for our residents. They will be delivered to us in about 30 to 60 days and we estimate that we'll be delivering them out to our residents over the next, weather depending by February, March. So we have 9,000 containers that will be coming into the city and we will deploy them out to the residents. Each one of these containers, the green container will be for trash, the blue container will be for recycling. We run, we run our numbers, we're confident that nearly 99% of the population in the city of Aberdeen on an average basis. So you say, "What is average?" About 31 pounds a week. average? About 31 pounds a week. 31 pounds a week, that's the average resident waste in the city of Aberdeen. Should be able to fit into one of these containers. Next slide. So how do we pay for this? So I've heard talk about a sticker program, and we've run into numbers, and even though we ask our residents to comply, voluntarily comply, mandatorily enforced, but the reality is, is that I don't have, the police department doesn't have a code enforcement officer to run around and tag the containers that are not out there. So option number one, we take the tipping fee and we embed it into a general fund. For an average resident, what that means is, in essence, their property tax would be wholly budgeted within the general fund. Basically, it means, and it's not free, but there's no additional fees. The pay-as-you-throw model would go to the wayside. Option two, we take that tipping fee, same program that we have, and instead of having a resident come into City Hall or to one of our participating vendors, and we, based on the numbers, it would approximate $60 per year, $15 per quarter to cover, and that would be billed into the water and sewer fund. That would only cover the tipping fee. In essence, nothing would change in the program as far as what we are currently, how we migrate to property taxes and the fees. So another gentleman earlier raised up property taxes and fees. What is the true cost? So that is the true cost. Option three is, this is the true cost. So in essence, establish an enterprise fund where that program to cover is, would be about $18 a month for those who participate. We have approximately 4,500 residents, and that's what we would have to collect if we were to privatize this out. Let me go to the next slide here, and let's talk a couple of options here. I've heard from our residents, well, I don't, I don't throw out as much. Why am I, why are you charging me extra? One of our options we've looked at is that if, if a resident who exceeds one of these containers on a regular basis, which we estimate to be more than once a month, would be charged for a second container. Simple math here, $60 a year for tipping fee, 120. That's how I got the numbers. Option three would be that if a resident under a flat fee would get a second container, we would charge them the appropriate amount under the tipping fee portion, $23 a month. No change in yard waste and bulk pickup. So one of the things I've heard from our residents, well, I go to Hartford Sanitation Services, their fees are a little bit more expensive. I won't talk about them too much other than say that they don't pick up yard waste. Bulk pickup, you have to take it to the landfill itself. So under this, we propose that under a flat fee or an option, that we would be able to, under the conscripts of the program, each resident would be allowed three bulk pickups and no addition, and there would be no additional cost. Beyond that, we would impose a fee. Reason for this is that for the majority of our residents, we feel it's, this is something that could be met on a fiscal year. However, we do know that there are some people who use more or like to clean out more. So we don't want to become the de facto cleaning bulk pickup service where you would go out to a container, a yard dumpster or something like that. Next slide. So these are, some of the benefits is, ideally is to increase safety and efficiency into our staff. Our trash guys, our refuse guys, they're great guys and gals. And we want to make sure that we respect, that they have an important job to do. City manager talks to me a little bit about the fact that one of the ICMA imperatives is, don't mess with the trash. Something's not working. But we're changing, and we have to look at how we can be more effective. And we, the city, feel that by going to this toter container, we'll be able to be more effective to our residents for these reasons. I would, since we have these options, and we've talked in work sessions, we haven't finalized the options. But the fee structures, I'd ask you to consider that incentives for a fee to comply with the program. And finally, there's, by eliminating the pay-as-you-throw, we don't get into a confrontation with our residents while we're trying to pick up trash. With that, I want to open the floor up to questions to the mayor and council and to the city manager, if there's any that I need to answer at this time.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Torster?
I guess my biggest question is, is, you know how I feel about the fees, that I don't think it's evenly distributed. So like me personally, I have a household of four, myself, my wife, my 90-year-old mother, and my teenage son, who brings other teenagers over. So we generate some trash. I probably generate a lot more trash than Mr. Hartman. But the way this lays out, we're going to pay basically the same fee, and that's one of my concerns. While I was listening to this, I know we do a census, and we take census numbers. Is there any way we could look at the number of people in the household and then base the fee on the number of people in the household to make it more evenly for people so, you know, myself and Mr. Hartman aren't paying the same? Just a suggestion. That's all I got.
Interesting. Well, option number two, everybody pays the same.
From having gone through this, one, I think that's a good suggestion. I hadn't thought of it, and I don't think we had discussed that. That's possible. We'd have to go back and look at maybe the diannual census and see what's out there. But independent of that, I would think it's important to note that under the first option, nothing changes for, yeah, I understand Darlene and I, with two, we have less than you. But what we tried to do, at least in the last six months, is build the case, if you will. It may be a weak case, it may be a strong case, but build the case. About a quarter of your residents under the sticker program are not compliant, and that's not this week, or that is consistent. So it's not about income either. It is about consistency. The sticker program doesn't work anymore, and whether we're the last one in it or not is somewhat, to me, academic. But I would say maybe the other cities have found something that we don't know, and that's why they've gotten out of it. I suggested to you all at the last workshop, I think, I think our financial posture is sound enough to take this on, but I understand that's a council manic discussion that you all have to take. But if you want us, because we were not looking at implementing this until April, I think it is, April or May, if the council wants us to go back and look at a prorata, per capita, or share inside, embedded in those households, I could see a lot of discussion. Oh, they're temporary, they're summer students, they're trashing through. But it is what it is. Flat fees work, but again, they are not, they're not egalitarian. They fit, one size fits all. And whether it's one person in the house or 15, it is a flat fee. So we wanted to bring it out to you in November so we could, you could hear from the citizens, get input, because we've got a long time to go before. Is that fair, Mr. Torster?
Yes. I just want to add a couple tidbits of information. Number one, the fees that are collected through the tipping, so we talk about compliance. So compliance could be measured in two ways. One, I put it, maybe I put a sticker out there, but the reality is, is that our trash is actually measured, and our tipping fees are based on weight. So short answer is, if I exceeding the amount of weight, which is, could be easily done, then I'm not in compliance. So even though I put one sticker out there for the size, I can exceed it very quickly just by dumping all my kitty litter into the bottom of the container and throwing it out. So that, that's number one on the compliance. The second option, or the second item, is as far as, we looked at other, when we looked at this, we've been studying this for some timeframe. I understand, counselor, what you talk about as far as giving our residents options. The business models that are out there for privatized contractors, you go to Hartford Sanitation Service or any one of the other cities that are out there, they don't do it because that's, their model is, their trucks are on the road, they're incurring an expense, their trucks have to drive the same number of miles, they have to have the same number of hours on the road, whether I throw out one bag of container or five bags of container. The only difference really it comes into is how much it costs that service to dispose of the trash. Okay? So when we look, when we look at these tipping fees, right now, I'm on par, I say I'm par, we're going to hit $255,000 in our tipping fee. That's where we're at. We're still at about 30 pounds of trash per week. So that's the two points that I'd like to answer to.
Thank you, Mr. Torster. Counsel, for clarification, for the public's benefit, the three options presented to us today effectively are, the recipient of the garbage collection pays no additional money outside of property tax. That's option number one. The challenge there is that today, let's look at where we're at today.
Monica, can you go back to the options, the fee structured?
That's okay. So where we're at today is, is 80% or so, 75 or 80% of the cost of garbage collection is being paid for out of the general fund property taxes. So $750, $800,000 of the cost of actual garbage and yard and yard waste and recycling pickup is being paid for with property tax money levied to your property taxes, which is about $0.05 per $100 of taxes as value in the city of Aberdeen. The balance of that is covered with the stickers, $200,000 or so per year, based on recent collection. So the first option presented takes the entire cost, instead of 75 or 80%, takes 100% of the cost and puts it into the general fund to be levied to the property taxes instead of to the user as the program was intended to help incentivize recycling. At conception, that was the intent of the program. By charging somebody about a dollar for a sticker, they're going to produce less garbage. Or $0.50 for a sticker, they'll produce less garbage. Right now, there's 4,500 homes, single-family homes and multifamily homes that have garbage pickup through the city of Aberdeen. None of our commercial taxpayers, none of our businesses or restaurants or offices or multifamily units with more than two or three units have Aberdeen Municipal Garbage Collection. They all pay for either waste management or Hartford Sanitation, or there's a couple new guys on the block in that space that do garbage collection. And so they're paying the same property tax rate but receiving no benefit as it relates to garbage, municipal garbage, or yard waste, or recycling pickup. So those are the two extremes. So it's either 100% borne by the property taxpayer. And option number three is the opposite, where that entire million dollars for garbage bulk and trash pickup, garbage bulk and yard waste pickup is borne by the payer rather than being borne by the taxpayers writ large. And so the second option offsets that partially, rather than having the entire 216 estimated total cost of the garbage collection being billed to the recipient and giving them the option to opt out, that's the thing, I don't think Mr. Torster indicated that. It's possible that if a household wanted to opt out and didn't want to have municipal garbage collection or yard waste collection or bulk pickup, they could opt out and save the $216, whereas today, that's impossible, given the garbage collection mostly being borne by the taxes. So there's, so we need input on this, what you think. The council has, I've heard them each say, you know, one direction is better than the other, and so this is still fluid. So give us input on where you think this should go. Materially, the question is, do you want it to come out of your property taxes, right, which is levied higher on more valuable and the businesses and multifamily and hotels that don't have any benefit from the garbage collection, or do we want it to be borne by the individual taxpayer, excuse me, the garbage producer, the single-family, multifamily home that produces the garbage and the yard waste and the recycling? So good. Did I cover that?
You did, Mayor.
Thank you. And when are you going to make a decision on that, Mr. Jack? When are you going to pull the trigger? That's finance, isn't it?
[laughing]
Yes, sir. So we'll keep working on that through the Thanksgiving holiday and hopefully have a good answer for you before the end of the year. In the meantime, have you ordered the toters, Mr. Torster?
Yes. This, last week, we ordered the toters. Can you, Monica, can you go back two slides? Yeah, that's one slide. Yeah, so what the containers are going to look like, I have a sample in front of you. It's, brand name is Toter. It's a company that's warranties their product for 12 years. They're very heavy duty, and so a resident would get a city of Aberdeen container for trash in green, and then a blue one for recycling. It'll have the trash only on the top and the recycling. We are, will be working over the next 30 to 60 days to start getting information out on the website and a letter out so that we can start educating our residents as far as the deployment schedule for them, as well as some of the other facts as far as the container. What happens to my container if it's lost, if it's stolen, how much does it cost? All those things, we're going to start putting those out on the website under our environmental recycling section under our website, as well as talking about, what do you do with my old containers? So we have a mix match of sizes out there, so we'll be putting that information. I won't go into this today.
And that's going to be on the city of Aberdeen's website at aberdeenmd.gov under, where? Can you go to the front page?
It'll, we'll put it on the front page, and then it'll link over to our Public Works Environmental Recycling Page.
You were pretty proud of your frequently asked questions. Is that going to be posted there?
Yes, I will. We'll be finalizing those frequently asked questions, and as we, as we seek input for the payment, the fee schedules, we'll go ahead and post those answers in there. For the questions, I'll pull those out at this time since the decision has not been made.
Thank you, Mr. Torster. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Torster regarding the changes in the garbage collection program? Public comment number two. Anybody who wants to address the counsel may approach the microphone. Please state your name and address. Mr. Schlotman, Mr. Hartman was three quarters the way up before you stood up.
Bob Hartman, 226 Paradise. On this trash pickup, can we opt out of it and get a reduction on our taxes? Because, okay, let's say we've got an older person lives next to us and everything else. They might only put trash out once a month.
I have, I'm ahead of you on this, okay? I'm ahead of you. It's possible to opt out. It's possible to opt out, and you could get with your neighbor, and instead of having two cans, you could have one can for both households.
No, what I'm saying is, if I'm not putting into it, then I want a reduction in taxes.
So that's the challenge, right?
That's right. If you're going to sit here and other people can opt out, then I should opt out and get a credit for taxes, get a reduction.
So the way that you'd be able to opt out is if the fee covered 100% of the cost of the service, right, the $216 annual cost, then...
Now, on these fees, I don't want no more fees.
I hear you. Good.
Put it as a tax, so then we can get credit for it.
Right. That's the same discussion we had in work session.
But also, these totes, you built these, you got the mechanical arms. Well, they're not moving so fast, and now you've got to have longer personnel out on the trucks and everything else. You know, a mechanical arm can only go so fast. Okay?
You can turn the speed up.
No, 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 no. So then you're going to have hydraulic fluid, everything else all over the place. So, you know... So, you know, I'm just telling you, you know, you're, you're taking longer to lift a tote, and I know it's, it's for manpower safety and all that, but when you put that mechanical arm out there, it only goes so fast. So now your, your times running are longer, and everything else. So, you know, and then if you have a truck go down, then you're really getting behind, and everything else. So what's that doing? Okay? That's putting financial burden back to the residents. You know? When I moved to the city of Aberdeen, when I paid my property taxes, it was supposed to be for my trash to be removed, and then all of a sudden, somebody got the bright idea, we'll do stickers. So then we had to pay this additional fee of 50 cents to a dollar.
Mr. Hartman, is your position then, that your taxes should 100% cover the cost of your garbage collection?
That's right. I should not get, we should not get another increase.
Noted.
Because I, like I said, I live on a state road, and I'm not getting anything else from Aberdeen. Yeah, I get water and sewer, okay, I'm paying for that. Okay? My trash, why am I paying more money, when I don't get all the luxuries everybody else does in the city? If you live on a state road, you're not getting all those luxuries. They don't plow my streets, they don't fix my sidewalks, they don't fix my curves, you know? You don't pick up my leaves if they're out in front of my house. And I, that gets to be an issue. It may be small, and everything else, but like I said, I've got neighbors that are older, and there's some people here in Aberdeen that can't afford $216 increase, because their social security are only gonna go up maybe $6. How in the hell can you justify $18 more a month, when they're only getting $60? And they could, they say, well, I'm either gonna pay my water bill, I'm gonna get my medicine, or something's gotta go. You know, we're not thinking about other people in our community. You know, everybody's sitting back, yeah, you got an income coming in, but they're on a fixed budget. You know, and, and I'm tired of hearing everybody's, well, it's like, we don't print money.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
You know, it's just to the point, we need to stop and look at the residents here in our community. We're pricing them right out of our community.
Long time no see, Mr. Slotman.
Hi, Mayor. Council. Mark Slotman, 327 Mount Royal Avenue. I, I stand before you as a private citizen, and also as a, as a chairman of the Planning Commission Board. And I'd like to discuss the development code revisions that the mayor and the council have, have put before us. The first one is on the width for the interior units for, from 18 feet to 20 feet, and I personally don't have any comment on that, but I would refer you to the email that board member Mike Hibe has sent everyone earlier this evening. He may, or may not have received that yet. What I would like to, to discuss for me personally is the, is under number three, which is subchapter 235-25, off-street parking. You want to eliminate all parking requirements in all zoning districts.
Everybody doesn't want to do that, let's be fair. Everybody doesn't want to do that.
Okay. That, that hit me, you blindsided me on that one. We've never, ever discussed that in, I don't know, 15 years, I guess I've been with, on the Planning Commission. We've, that's actually been a source of, of contention, in that we make sure that we have enough parking for the businesses. I feel that, well, a couple, many things. If you don't have parking requirements for an individual business, you may have a developer, or a, a business owner that would just buy the piece of property that that piece, that that business is gonna sit on, the footprint of that business is gonna sit on, and not care about the parking for their customers. They would encroach on somebody else's parking spot. You could have business A being very busy, and business B being right next to them, separate owners, and business A would go over to business B's parking, because they didn't have to have any kind of parking requirements. In the past, the Planning Commission has asked businesses that have shared parking, these would be shopping centers, probably the, the best example would be Mr. Haps's property there with the Holiday Inn, and Chick-fil-A, and the Olive Tree, is, is to sign cross-tenant agreements, should those properties ever be sold individually, that those parking agreements would, would follow the, the sale, the, of the business, so that the Olive Tree customers would have someplace to park, or Chick-fil-A customers would have someplace to park, and Holiday Inn customers would have someplace to park. I think it's very short-sighted not to have parking requirements for a business. I think you're doing the, the business a disservice, and you're certainly doing the customers a disservice. Not to mention, and there's nothing mentioned in here, but would you also get rid of handicap parking? Would, would you also get rid of parking for staff? Would you get rid of parking for a, a police officer? And you'll see in malls, and shopping centers, there'll actually be a lane for a police officer, or for a security officer. Would you get rid of those, if there were no parking requirements? Those are things ought to be thought about. So, I think, I'd ask the council and the mayor to rethink parking requirements. We have a permitted use, or not permitted uses, but we have a, a chart that shows what parking is required for certain businesses, whether it's a hotel, retail, restaurant, shopping center, and so forth. So, please, please do not eliminate all, all parking requirements. The other one I wanted to mention was, you want to eliminate all building setbacks. Was that in the TOD only, or is that building setbacks only? Please think about that. We've, we have cut back on some of the setbacks, but please, please go back and revisit the, the setbacks on, on the properties. And then, the, the last one, which is number five on the sheet, 235-27, and I, I know this is, this is a pet, no pun intended, a pet idea of, of some of the, of the council. But, you want to allow up to six female chickens to be raised and kept in any district, provided enclosed coop or shed. We had some discussion over this when we were, when we were doing this, and I may want to just mention to the, the mayor and the council, that I know Dominique is here from the board, I don't think anybody else is here from the board. This project took us about two and a half years. So, we, we delved into this with the help of Phyllis, and Gil, and, and their office, that this took a lot of thought. This was one of the last things that we looked at, actually, was to allow chickens to be raised and kept in, in, in the city. Our feeling was, we are a city, we're not an agricultural district. There are no ag districts left in Aberdeen, and we thought of the, the problems that could be associated with keeping chickens. The noise, the litter, and the litter, when I say litter, chicken manure is, is considered littered in the industry. So when you hear of, like Purdue, having to get rid of tons of chicken litter, that is chicken manure. Odor, predators. With chickens, you're gonna draw a fox, you're gonna draw probably dogs, and the chickens can't be kept in a, in a small coop unless you're, again, Purdue, or Tyson, or somebody that has chicken houses that may hold 250,000 chickens, but these chickens are gonna be out, running around during the day, and probably going back into the coop in the evening. So you have, you have a problem of loose chickens running around. It's like you have a problem with loose dogs or loose cats. And then who's gonna enforce if somebody has seven chickens, or eight chickens, or if they get out? So, I asked the mayor and the council to please revisit the, the chicken issue with, with that. We laugh, but it's, I know it's, you know, in some places, chickens are allowed, obviously in agricultural areas, rural areas, and so forth, but we're a city.
Baltimore City permits chickens, Mr. Slotman.
I know, but we're trying to...
I'm just saying.
We've done, we've done our very best to, with the development code, to, to make the city better.
Yes, sir.
And...
To your point, I appreciate your, your input on, on these matters. As it relates to building setbacks, the setbacks in cities are much smaller than they are in the city of Aberdeen. One, if we're gonna be a city. And two, many cities, and I will send a link to you to disseminate to the Planning Commission, have adopted no parking minimums, because they find that the, the parking spaces are the least valuable piece of any construction project. The least valuable compared to the building, compared to stormwater improvements if they're required, and by requiring parking spaces, whether for police officers, or for handicap accessibility, which are included in this amendment, by the way, by requiring a minimum of parking spaces, it requires parking spaces where there otherwise would not be parking, right? Where it's not needed. There's 1,000 parking spaces at the stadium that the city owns, that are never used, and so they're, you know, impervious surface that sits there forever.
Well, I was, I'd have to disagree. They are used, they're used at every baseball game.
Sir, so yes. So, so the question is, are we gonna build for peak use? Are we gonna build parking lots for Black Friday? Or are we gonna build parking lots for regular use? And it's not, and I, and I wanna work with the Planning Commission on this, I don't think my amendment is gonna be adopted, but I wanna work with the Planning Commission to help understand what the value to a city is of parking spaces compared to more, higher, better uses of land.
Well, we did talk about eliminating the parking requirements in downtown.
Yes, sir, and that's still included in there.
And we under, we, we get that, but you can't, we don't think you could eliminate a parking requirement for a hotel, or for a restaurant. Where would you put those people?
I would think that the, the business would not build a hotel, or not activate parking.
Ah, you don't know. You don't know. You, you can't think of what the business may or may not do. You, you have to guide the businesses, and that's what a code is for.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Slotman.
Okay? No, well, I'm not done.
Oh, yes, sir.
I'm now gonna talk to you as, as, as citizen, Mark, and it has to do with the, with the trash. I was, I was actually part of, as a peripheral part, when the sticker program started, back, what was that, 15 years ago or so, 12, 15 years ago?
24 years.
24 years ago, I'm sorry, 24 years ago, with Jim Litke. And I say that because, at, at that time, I worked for a printing company, I actually printed the stickers, and we also printed the small, two-part NCR sheets, forms, that the trash people would leave on your trash, if you did not sticker it properly, or there was no sticker. And that seemed to work pretty well. When this first came out, there were, my feeling was, there were two ways to get somebody to do something. You could either incent them, incentivize them to do something, or you could penalize them to do something. We wanted to increase the recycling and eliminate the trash. So what we did, we did not charge for recycling, and we charged for trash. So you only paid for trash, you did not pay for recycling. Our recycling went up. Now, you're saying, Kyle's telling us that recycling has, has leveled off at about 25%, which is still pretty high. My guess is, you can save your money on the recycling bins, because if people are gonna have to pay for trash, they're not gonna recycle anything. They're gonna throw everything in the trash. There's only, unless, unless people have an inner feeling, an inner drive to recycle, some of us do, as most of you know, I collect aluminum cans for the, for the Lions Club, and steel, and copper, and everything else, if they're gonna pay for it, they're gonna throw it right in the trash. They're gonna say, you know what? I don't care. I don't care about the ecology, I don't care about the environment, I'm gonna throw it right in the trash. So save your money on the, on the recycling bins, and just buy the green bins, because you won't need the recycling bins. And, and two, I can't believe, we've, we've been very complimentary to the Public Works employees, and well-deserved, I can't believe they don't know the difference between recycling and trash. I've never had that problem with, with the recycling people. They know my recycling, and they know my trash.
Are you talking about the compliance with the...
No, I'm talking about, you said that the, one of the reasons up there was, there was a confusion. I don't see that. My, my, I, I do complain that he put my trash can in the, in the driveway once in a while, but they never, ever mix up my trash with my recycling.
I appreciate that, Mr. Slotman. To your point, I got a phone call from somebody on the Planning Commission, who will go nameless, who said, "I put one sticker on my trash. What's awesome hearing about getting rid of the sticker program? I like putting one sticker on my can, and having my four bags removed." And I said, "What? What?" He said, "Oh, down to just a couple members, it could be," but this, this individual told me that, that the Department of Public Works picks up this person's garbage with one sticker on the can with four bags in it. And I said, "Why would you think that's acceptable? Because everybody else put a sticker on there."
Right. He's putting it on the can and not on the bags?
And one per can, not one per bag, as everybody else does. This person said that this person asked the city, and that was what this person was told. And I said, "That, that's not the case, right?"
That's wrong.
So, so, the city is responsible partially for the degradation over time of the communication, as it relates to what the protocol's supposed to be, as it relates to the sticker.
Correct. I agree.
But there's also the issue of compliance, as it relates to identifying the recycling and the, and the trash that exists. It's real, it's a real problem.
Okay. I don't see it, but if you're telling me it is, I believe you, but I don't see it.
What's interesting is, it wasn't discussed, but the, the difference is significant, right? Because recycling weighs a lot less than garbage does, right? A dirty diaper weighs, you know, a pound and a half, and an entire container full of recycling weighs a pound and a half, right? Because it's empty plastic, empty paper containers. And so, I agree with your sentiment, and I hope that you are mistaken, that people will still recycle, given the lack of...
I hope they do, but I don't think they will. I think if it, if it, if it's a question of my wallet, or the environment, they're gonna think of their wallet first. I truly think that.
So you wanna keep a sticker?
I would love a sticker. I spend about $50 a year, it's just me, on trash. There, there are some weeks I don't even put trash out, I always put recycling out, but there, there are some weeks that I don't put trash out at all, because I recycle so much, and I'm just one. Now, Mr. Lindcamp with a family of four, he readily admits that he puts out more trash. That makes sense, okay? But it's pay-as-you-go, so he's gonna pay a little bit more. I pay a little less, and I try to recycle as much as I can, even stuff that the city, I, I can make money on through the, for the Lions Club or whatever, and the city doesn't even take that, so I'm not even throwing out aluminum cans, or, or steel cans. I'm, I'm throwing out paper and, and glass. So, I would like the mayor and the council, and Public Works to, to rethink this. Evidently, this is a fait accompli, we've already ordered the, the totes, it's just how we're gonna pay for them. You're gonna pay $400,000 for totes, and our deficit, delta, as, as Mr. Torstler says, is about $33,000. So that's, that's about 12 years' worth of deficit, and we're paying $400,000, and you're gonna have to replace those eventually, every so often. So, again, I ask the, the mayor and the council and Public Works to, to rethink this.
Thank you, Mr. Slotman.
I think the sticker program worked pretty well. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Slotman, thank you for your service on the Planning Commission, and to your members of the Planning Commission, especially on the lengthy efforts on the development code. It does not go unrecognized by this council.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I do have a very good board, and they do work hard, and they're very conscientious, and I, I, I am proud to be working with those people.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Steve Johnson, 119 West Peller Avenue. Didn't want to address the parking requirements. You might, just food for thought, think of, of parking requirements over a certain square footage building, because some of the smaller lots downtown, it is difficult to put a building on a property, meet your stormwater management, your pervious, non-pervious, and your building requirements, so that may foster downtown, on the smaller lots, some revitalization, to possibly look at those a little different. But when you're talking buildings over a certain square footage, I think they should have some kind of parking requirement. And then let's get back to the trash. Before 1992, with people that moved in Aberdeen, their trash was included in their taxes, in the tax number. Now, you talk about the increase in the tipping fees since 1992, let's talk about the increase in property taxes since 1992. So you have to look at the relativity, and I also agree with Mr. Slotman. That was implemented to incentivize recycling. If you take that incentive away, I think it will degrade our recycling program, which will end up being more tonnage in the dump, and more tipping fees. Also, have you taken into consideration rental properties? We have a large number of rental properties in Aberdeen. The option two, putting it on the water bill, if your tenant moves out and doesn't pay the water bill, this then falls on the landlord to put out no trash at that address. And if a property is empty for a quarter, does the landlord have to pay for the trash pickup, when no trash was generated? Some of these things, you need to just put in... Some of these things you need to just put in the blender and think over while you're coming up with some formula for the trash. But personally, I think it should be included in our taxes that we pay currently. Again, we have the highest taxes in the county, so it devalues our property to some degree with property outside of our city. So somewhere down the line, we have to look at parity, making our properties worth what they are outside city limits. So this is one way. I know it's a small step, but it's just one step that we could take to help do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm still at the Northgate Road, Aberdeen Mayor, Bernard Backus. I just have one comment, and this is the banker coming atting me. Of all I've seen tonight, the one thing that concerns me is commingling. Commingling, using the water billing and come over here to another activity within the city and ask them to do the administration, bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for his time, public comment? You don't have to move fast. You got to give me some inclination. You're getting up. Councilman Vincenti, you want to say anything?
Yes, sir.
All right, council, we have, the business from the mayor and council have some announcements and then we have a closed meeting at the end of our meeting. For the public's benefit on that point, we hope to have a meeting in private. The way this will work is, if we have three votes out of five up here to close the meeting, at the end of this meeting, we will adjourn from here to a closed meeting in the second floor conference room. You don't have to stick around, but if you do stick around, we will come back down and reopen the meeting at the end of that closed session down here in the public. So with that, Councilman Taylor, want to start on your end?
Nothing, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Lambek.
I just want to thank Mr. Slottman and we also have another member of the planning.
Hold on one second until people quieten. All right, get your conversations outside, please.
Business isn't over.
Councilwoman Lambek.
I would like to thank them. I sat on some of the very beginning ones and some of the end ones of a two and a half year, almost three-year project. And I want to tell you that you really have given much more consideration than we have to these amendments. So I appreciate your words and I will speak for you and not let you down. I, you know, I, I sat on the planning commission for 20 years and I know how hard it was when you spend two and three years in a plan and you give it to the council and they do what they want. And you think, why did we, why did we do that? So I think we need to listen to what you've done. That's just my opinion and I thank you very much. Thank you.
Councilman Gooden.
I have nothing, sir.
Councilman Lindcamp.
Yeah, two little things. First one, it's been brought to my attention that I'm not receiving the information people may believe I am, especially when they have attempted to reach me through the mayor, city manager, other avenues. So if there's something I need to be informed about, please reach out to me personally, email, phone or in person. And next, I want to thank all the businesses that were here tonight for coming out and expressing their concerns about the stadium. I know I've been expressing my concerns for the last several months. I still believe the council and the city manager not do their due diligence when it comes to a new licensing agreement or the sale of the stadium. The council seems unaware of the economic impact the stadium and the Ripken experience provide this city. Several new hotels are coming online. Restaurants, other benef, other businesses benefit from the Ripken organization and not just from the revenue they bring in and the revenue they bring us, but that by the employment that they give this city. There are still several questions that, that we have to answer. Can we even sell the stadium because of the bond issue? That hasn't been answered yet. The only way I would vote to sell the stadium is three criterias have to be met. One, it must benefit the city. It must benefit Tufton and it must benefit the buyer. And again, I believe this shouldn't come down to five members up here voting on this. I believe it should go to referendum. When the city tries to sell one of its major assets, a stadium, worth probably, probably worth about $20 million, the citizens should have some say in that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Can I ask you to tell me what information you think is not passing from the city manager or me to you?
Well, we have a big meeting tomorrow that I still don't know if we're having a meeting because your information to me was, "I think we're meeting with the hotels tomorrow." Are we meeting with the hotels? Are we not meeting with the hotels? I don't know.
Was there information that was requested? So what your statement was, was that the city manager and myself are not giving information to you.
If we're having a meeting with the hotel owners about the Ripken stadium, that should be shared with everybody. I sent out an email to everybody.
So, so I'm talking now. So, no, you made an allegation that information was not being delivered to you and I'm just confused as to what kind of allegation that could exist because I responded in the affirmative via email that this was the details of this meeting tomorrow.
You said, "I think." You didn't say we were having a meeting. You think we're having a meeting.
So I guess I missed your phone call when you called me to follow up on that.
And when I talked to Mr. Councilman Taylor, he said, he wasn't sure if we were having a meeting and you said he was with you for this. So I don't know if we're having a meeting or not.
Good question. Mr. City Manager, can you address the question of whether there's a meeting tomorrow night at City Hall?
We are having a meeting. If people want to show up, you hand-carried notes to all the hotelers. I think it became as, from Mr. Taylor's. And I saw your emails to each other over the weekend. So I'm not sure what else to tell you, other than if they show up, there would be a meeting. But just like last week with.
Graceford Drive.
Graceford, 25 invitations and four, four houses, so. By, by name invitations, right? We sent letters and hand-carried it, so.
Thank you. So to that point, Graceford Drive has been experiencing some issues with water discoloration. There's about 20 affected households, as far as we can tell, the result of a booster pump on Graceford Drive that is not, that was not being operated as often as it had in years past, leading to sedimenty water. If anybody in Aberdeen has any issues, any concerns about their water, they should call the city and say, "I'm having this issue. We look into these things. We follow up on these things." And in the case of these residents on Graceford Drive, we're looking into long-term solutions but are taking short-term actions to resolve the cloudiness of the water, specifically by running the booster pump more often. So, but if there, if the city doesn't know about the concern that people are having with whether their water quality or the garbage pickup, then we can't address it. So please, don't be scared of City Hall. Call and we'll address any concerns you have about any of the services provided by the city, whether water or sewer, garbage collection or otherwise. I have some slides, Madam Clerk, and my, I don't have a clicker, and so I guess I will advise you when we got to flip them. So go to the first slide for me. I wanted to, to lay out some facts of the Ripken Stadium situation as it relates to the city's position and, and where we stand going forward. Specifically, fact number one, the stadium is owned and maintained by the city of Aberdeen. The financing of this, the, the capital costs of the facility are through the city's general fund, that's property taxes, whether personal property taxes or real estate property taxes and the hotel motel taxes generated in the city. Despite repeated requests, Tufton has not shown the city leaders its financial documents. We've requested books over and over again and we have been rebuffed. Now, there is no obligation for Tufton to show these books because they're a private entity and the concession agreement that we have does not demonstrate that they need to provide this. But the city government operates as an open book by law and we don't know what's happening with the books of Tufton. The ANA taxes have declined the last five years, reflecting weakened revenue from events there. The city owes still today about $2.3 million in bond payments due on the stadium or for the next four years, about $600,000 a year. The stadium is about 15 years old and the total expenses at the stadium paid by the city with grants and with straight tax money from the city, including maintenance and the bond payments, are about $5 million over the last five years. Next slide, please. Just so we're on the same page here, the, this is an overhead view of the city's property highlighted in blue, which includes the stadium and the parking lot attached to the stadium. There's other baseball use properties near the stadium, specifically on the top side of the image that we're looking at here, that are not owned by the city and are not what we're talking about when we're talking about disposition. When we're talking about selling the stadium, we're talking about the highlighted blue section. That's the stadium and the parking lot. Good. Next slide, please. The city has consistently asked Tufton to organize and hold more community, oh, sorry, skipped one. You did not, I did, Madam Clerk. Thank you. In 2016, the Tufton Professional Baseball LLC, the Ironbirds management that the city has an agreement with, paid a license fee of 2016 of $65,000. In 2017, they're in the process of paying $95,000 in total rents to the city. Unless another agreement is reached, Aberdeen and Tufton will revert to the 2002 concession agreement that governs, governs how and when non-baseball activities can be conducted inside the stadium. This city council voted unanimously to offer first rights to purchase the Ripken Stadium to Tufton. They declined. Next slide. Tufton has been asked to organize and hold more community-type, non-baseball events inside the stadium. They have repeatedly said that they're not in the events business, they're in the baseball business. Did I skip one?
No, she just hasn't got it changed.
Okay, great. Tufton hosts church events, luncheons, Little League, job fairs, military shows, all at money being paid to them, to Tufton, from the users of the facility. The city council unanimously agreed to consider the sale of stadium to a third party. Lots of variables will be in play, including how to resolve the bond issue, assuming the existing concession agreement that goes back to 2002, what other potential uses are available at the site and conditions of a sale. All this stuff gets worked out in a real estate contract. So here's the way forward on the next slide. The city council has, go back one. Oh, one more forward, one more forward. I apologize. So, there we go. That's where I want to be. So we're going to identify and select a reputable and proven realty organization capable of nationally marking, marketing the Ripken Stadium. We're going to engage with Bond Council, spelled correctly with a S-E-L, to see if and how the transfer or early payment of the stadium bonds can be done. We don't know if it can be done. We're going to investigate that in the process of marketing the facility for sale. And based upon all that information, we're going to work with a third-party purchaser to better use the stadium while creating conditions to grow opportunities in the city and for Tufton and for the Ironbirds. It's this council's desire that everybody wins in this deal. The city has demonstrated, this council has demonstrated that we are not effective utilizers of the facility. We believe a third-party owner would do a better job holding events that would benefit the city, holding events that would benefit the new owner and, and ultimately, Tufton and the Ironbirds to make it a stadium that's used year-round effectively for everybody, generating more tax revenue, generating more money for the owner and just being a better community asset before the stadium wears out, right? Every piece of real property has a useful life. Before the thing wears out, we want to see it utilized. I think that's all I've got. Yeah, okay. So, thank you. Have some announcements. We have some meetings and events. Chief, you want to speak to the Police Department's Holiday and Toy Drive?
Um, it's that time of year again where the Aberdeen Police Department and the United States Marine Corps work together with Toys for Tots for children. We collect toys at the police department or you can flag down a police officer, you see him riding down the road and you can give him a toy for the kids and we'll accept it. I think I read it on your end. We'll accept it for a period of time up to Christmas. Plus, the next meeting will talk about all the other Christmas programs we have going on for around the city.
Sounds good, sir. Thank you. The Blue Cheetah Turkey Trot is to be held right here at Festival Park, November 23rd. That's Thanksgiving Day at 8:00 a.m. City Hall will be closed in observance of Thanksgiving on Thanksgiving Day and on the Friday following. There's a council work session scheduled that Monday, Monday, November 27th, right here at City Council, or City Hall, in second floor conference room with a regularly scheduled meeting right here at 7:00. Aberdeenans' Christmas Street Celebration starts very early in the morning with Breakfast with Santa at Grace Methodist Church, I think at 06:30 or 07:00 on December 2nd, the first Saturday in December, as it has been for 51 years, I think is this year, with the Christmas Street Parade beginning at 3:00 p.m., starting at the corner of Law Street and West Beller Avenue. The planning commission meetings, next meeting is, planning commission's next meeting is Monday, December 13th at 7:00 right here in the council chambers. Does anybody have any other announcements to make in advance of a motion to close the Hearing none. Under the statutory authority to close the session, general provisions, Article Section 3, 305B, under number four, to consider a matter that concerns the proposal for a business or industrial organization to locate, expand or remain in the state, specifically contract discussions. I move to close the meeting. Is there a second? A second from Councilman Taylor. Any discussion on the motion to close the meeting? Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lambek?
Aye.
Councilman Gooden?
Aye.
Councilman Lindcamp?
Aye.
Mayor McGrady?
Aye. Five votes, the affirmative. We're going to close the meeting. We're going to go upstairs.